Good evening or good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Independent City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014. We're here at Central High School with the senior class. And, uh, good to see you, everybody. This morning, this is our 11th year of coming to Central High School for a council meeting. And our goal here today is to do two things. Is to, uh, one, let seniors and voters and folks here see, uh, government is just regular people, and this is how we do it. And, uh, two, we want to hear from a number of the students today on a couple of topics, and so we're looking forward to that. Um, we're gonna start off by some introductions, so those of you in the audience, they know who's in front of you, and I'll start, and then we'll go down and start with Council Morton. I'm John McCartl. Uh, I'm the mayor, but during the day, I work at WIMPEG Community College. I raise money professionally for, uh, to build, uh, science buildings, auto buildings, scholarships, and those kind of things. I have a son who graduated in 2011 from Central, and he's at the University of Oregon. Uh, Council Morton?
My name is Marilyn Morton. I have been on council for 11 years, and really enjoy it. I have two graduates of Central High School, and each of them has gone on to graduate from college. One is a duck, one is a beaver. And during the day, I work at MINET.
Good morning. I'm Forrest Peck, and I live at the airpark. During the day, I run a nonprofit in Salem. That's housed at the Chomacca Small Business Development Center. And we help people who have business ideas figure out, figure out how to get them started. We work with people, um, who are both English and Spanish speakers.
I'm Tom Kakis. I have, uh, two kids that graduated from Central High School. Uh, one's still in college, although Evan just graduated last year. Um, and I'm currently working in landscape construction.
I'm David Klein. I'm your city manager. I've been here for about four years almost, and, you know, I went for 12, and hired a medic in Colorado, California.
I'm Nancy Lodge. I'm a retired business owner, um, past president of Independence Downtown Association, and I volunteer in my spare time for quite a few organizations. I've been a member of the city council since 2001.
Morning. Jerry Hoffman. Um, I have a daughter, a sophomore here, three kids, who came to school here before graduating. Uh, I'm retired. It's really new to me. I've been retired for like three weeks. I haven't really figured out how to do it yet. It's, it's, it's part of life. You really gotta learn how to, not only how to work, but how to...
I'm a volunteer.
Oh, yeah, I know. But I am learning how to say no to people. From that standpoint, it's good. And I, I think I've been on council about 11 years, too, so...
My name is Karen Johnson. I work for the city. I'm the city reporter, and I have worked here for 14 years, and love every minute of it.
Thank you. Council Liz Kauf is unable to join us today. Uh, she has a work commitment that precludes her from joining us. As you can tell, uh, people have, uh, day jobs, and so, and everybody up here, all the council members and myself, they're all volunteers. They don't get paid anything for what they do. So, just wanted to do that. Uh, we have visitor comments, and I think we have some folks from Ash Creek Elementary School who are going to make a report today. And, uh, please come forward, and you're welcome to use the podium. I want to acknowledge the, uh, Ash Creek students that are in the audience today. We're glad you're able to come over this morning. We appreciate, uh, an opportunity to hear from you.
I've seen a few of you dawn already. Please yawn freely, we do.
But not about this report.
Not about this report. That's correct.
Good morning. My name is Brian Ross, and I'm a student teacher at Mr. Beams...
My name is Brian Ross, and I'm a student teacher at Mr. Beams' fifth grade class. I graduated from Central in 2001. It didn't look anything like this. And it is my honor to introduce to you our Independent City Council Committee.
Hi. Our names are Jasmine...
Jayden.
Jayden. Jade. And me, Jordan. Mr. Beams' class is... Mr. Beams' class is one of the first classes to go from kindergarten to fifth grade at Ash Creek. To celebrate our achievement, we'd like to build a trail around the perimeter of our school. Next, we are going to show you a video that will give you some extra information about our trail and what we're doing.
We're building a trail to leave a legacy. The name of our trail will be called the Ash Creek Legacy Trail. We are planning to have a sign built by service graphics and Central High School's metal shop students. The sign will be where the red arrow is pointing. This is a sketch of what the sign might look like.
We only need about fifteen to half hour. During that, we find out that only about three trucks full. Central's high school metal shop students are relaying a bench and a concrete picnic table for our trail. They are doing something special for us on our bench. The project will help us with civic responsibility, math, public speaking, writing, science, and much, much more. It will benefit our school and the community. Things you, really neat things that you might find on the Ash Creek Legacy Trail. You might find eagles, blue herons, neutros, eggs, and other cool animals. There will be two very important dates. May 17th, 8:00 a.m. This will be the day when we spread out the hot field with community help. June 2nd, 8:10 a.m. This is the trail dedication day for our school and community. Our class committees have obtained commission from the Central School District, Superintendent Brazil, and Business Manager Boots. My brother is toward the hot field people. The Athletic Director, Mr. Heidrich, Tua Moore, Mr. Neville, the, um, Central High School Metal Shop teacher. The Ash Creek Elementary School parent club, Mr. Harlow, our, um, principal. Mr. Peters and Mr. Sparker.
Thank you for giving your time to be here to see our presentation. Are there any questions?
Well, it looks like a really interesting project, and I want to commend the presenters today and all the, uh, folks that from, uh, Ash Creek that are involved with this. What a wonderful addition to, uh, the whole community, and I think we deserve, we should give them a big round of applause. We don't normally get fancy presentations like that.
No. It must be a little backstabbing.
Okay, are there any other, uh, people who have a public comment to make? I don't see anyone stepping to the microphone, so we're gonna continue with the agenda. Uh, my report, I have a couple of things, and I'm sure I'm gonna step all over Sean Irvine, our economic development, uh, person, but I want to, uh, say how proud I am to let you folks know that we have been selected from all the cities in the United States. Independence is one of 25 cities selected as a finalist for an All-American City Award. There's only one city in Oregon, one in, one in Washington, and two in California. The rest are back east. We were an All-American City finalist in 2007, and we're very proud to be there again. One of the reasons that, uh, we have been, uh, declared finalists as an All-American City is a number of the community projects have happened. And I know that some of the folks here in the audience today were involved with some of the projects over at Pioneer Park, over in the ball fields with the running trails, and some of the other volunteer projects. So, for those of you who helped with that, thank you very much. Uh, we're really looking forward to, we're going to compete in the finals in Denver in, uh, in June. We're pretty excited about that. Being an All-American City is, uh, is a pretty big thing. To be a finalist is, uh, it's really cool. And, uh, to be able to compete with the other cities, and, uh, we typically are one of the smallest communities in the United States that competes events, and, uh, so I wanted to thank everybody who's helped make that happen. Uh, under my report, council members, we have, uh, some commission board appointments. You have a, uh, an appointment on, uh, page one for a planning commission and two appointments for the Parks and Recreation Board. You have the, uh, detailed applications in front of you, and do they meet with your approval?
I moved to appoint both of these folks, or all of these folks to the commissions and committees to which they have applied.
And I have a motion to second. Karen, you were trying to flag me there?
I'm sorry. And you also had the one that was the gentleman.
Uh, yes, I, I have a, um, Marilyn, you were sharing, and we have a budget committee, uh, appointment. Could you briefly share that one, please?
Yes. Miranda Garrison, who is a small business owner downtown in Independence, has expressed interest in being on the budget committee. I don't have her name signed on the line yet, but I will before the end of the week. So, she would, uh, more than likely be willing to be appointed, uh, preemptively.
Yes, I will, uh, I'm gonna, uh, offer that name as a, as an addition for the budget committee for your consideration. Can you, is the, uh, uh, do we amend the motion to, uh, include that?
So amended.
And the second is okay?
Jury.
Okay. Is there further discussion in this? All in favor, 65, saying aye. I'm gonna close the motion, Karen. Thank you very much. Uh, council liaison appointments. Uh, Council Peck, uh, on the planning, please.
Well, the last time I reported to you, we had really nothing to report. We hadn't met since October of 2014, but I'm happy to say we met in February, and, uh, we had a zone change that we looked at. You're familiar with what came out of that, that was the meeting. We have another commission meeting with some, we're gonna adjourn, there's activity in May. It's been rescheduled from the first Monday to the second Monday evening. So, if anybody's interested in seeing what a planning commission does, come on out.
Thank you. Uh, Council Hoffman, give a MINET report, please.
Yes, I do, and so I don't step on Don Patton, what he has to present for a little while. I just wanna, I wanna talk about competition just a little bit. You're all familiar with planning, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Um, in, in recent months, uh, MINET has been working very hard to expand our reach into the community. We've been marketing very hard. You may have had flyers under the door, somebody come to your door and talk to your mom and dad, um, telephone calls. We're really working, working hard to expand the system because you own it. I mean, Monmouth in Independence bought this system years ago. When we went to the big companies and asked them if they could give us something better than dial-up service on our internet, and all of them said, "Yeah, in about 20 years." And we said, "We're not gonna wait." And so, we went ahead and built a system, a fiber optic system, to every home in Monmouth and Independence, that can be hooked up very easily and, um, uh, and give you gig, gigabyte, gigabyte speed. We're one of 12 cities in the United States that has, is a gig city, that can give you speed on your internet service of gigabyte or better. Uh, you hear all the advertising on TV about less than that, what it costs, but we can give you gigabyte service. Uh, some of the competitions start to play kinda dirty because they don't like the fact that we've built our own system. And so now they're trying to come back into town and beat our price. And they're having a really hard time looking here. We're very proud, in fact, that we built this system, and then it belongs to you, and then you have a lot to say about how it works. So, I hope that when, uh, Mr. Patton, who's the, uh, executive director, the manager for MINET comes up to talk about it, that he'll listen closely to what he has to say because it affects everyone who lives there.
Thank you. Um, Council Morton, would you like to talk about WIMPEG this morning?
I would. WIMPEG, which is W-I-M-P-E-G, stands for Western Independence Monmouth Public Education Government. It is our local access TV station. And WIMPEG has a very strong board and a strong director, a strong employee who's, uh, standing over in the corner. He does a good part of the, the filming. You've seen some new things on those channels. Channel 99 is devoted to independence. Channel 17 is devoted to Monmouth. 18, and 17 is Western. And, uh, there are lots of new programs on, I know that you probably all want to see the city council meetings more than anything else because they're so exciting and stimulating. But, uh, some of the people have become local stars. Mrs. Lodge down there, there is a program that runs on her. And there's one on, uh, the chief of police, who recently retired from Independence, and many more are coming. And I'm sure if you have a desire to be on local access TV, go talk to Mr. Killen, and he'll make that happen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, we're gonna go into, uh, city staff reports, and I'll have our David Klein, our city manager, make the first report. We frequently get reports, so we know what's going on. Is there a lot of different kinds of things going on? We have a number of different reports today.
Some mayor members of council, members of the audience, uh, just in keeping with the spirit of the day, Earth Day, that was just an absolutely wonderful presentation from Ash Creek Elementary. Thank you for what your contribution to the community has done, your great project. And to the young folks in the audience, I have, uh, my youngest daughter is a senior in high school, and she's about to graduate, so I know the challenge that you face and the life you have to look forward to. Thank you for that. Hopefully you can hear me now. If you missed all my introductory comments, they weren't worth listening to, anyway. So, just to report to you on a few items of business, uh, I think you're all familiar with this Denali Independent Station, our, uh, our Sheldon Building on downtown, is scheduled finally for sale, uh, on May 23rd at 10:00 a.m. That's the opportunity the city will have to perhaps get that building back in our possession so that we can finally do something to complete construction on that building. I should let you know that we have, as we have in the past, that we have yet to get received contact from a title company that is looking for selling figures on that building. So, there's still, there's still maybe a time that the current developer may, in fact, have found financing to pay off the, uh, the judgment on the building. We can only assume that if that happens, that maybe it will be incentive to proceed to completion as well. So, uh, either way, we, we think that building has a little bit brighter future than it has had in the past.
Just for the audience, the city is not on that building. That is a building that is owned by a private developer, and he is in foreclosure because he owes the city $600,000 in system development charges, and it's going to a charity sale on, uh, uh, May 23rd. And so, that's, uh, we always have to remind people, we don't own it, but if they don't pay us, we may end up owning it, and there aren't gonna be any of the students. Excuse me.
No, that's fine. That's only, it's always a kind of, a conversation about that building. Uh, but we are looking forward to good news with that one way or the other. So, uh, with respect to another building, the old city hall that we vacated in favor of our new civic center, that building has, we have received the, uh, the further payments on that building, so that project is, uh, moving forward. We should open, hopefully in the not-too-far future with a, uh, I forget the name of the project, Something Treasures, Family Treasures, so, uh, kind of a series of, uh, of shopping experiences in that building. So, that'll be kind of exciting to see that happen as well. Uh, you were speaking about the budget committee earlier. Just a reminder, the first meeting of that committee is, is, uh, the 30th of this month. So, that's a Wednesday, so keep the calendar. Mark's in that.
Council members, I'm gonna, again, jump in. Um, this will be, we, uh, we will not have an orientation meeting. This will be, uh, we're gonna go live on the 30th, and, uh, do it in one, uh, we may be able to do this in one city. So, uh, please put that on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you had mentioned earlier the All-American Cities application. We have been meeting with the subcommittee, uh, to move that project forward. The June 13th travel day is coming quickly, and there's a lot of preparation work that needs to be done, including putting the travel team together, uh, finding a budget for that, and, and putting together our presentation. I should, I should mention that, that one, a large part of that project was also the fine work here at the school with their, with their meals programs, and we, uh, that was a third of our application. So, just wanted to congratulate the school on your, on your share of, of the fine work that got us to be a finalist in this project. So, good, good work. Um, we, uh, as we mentioned previously, that we have put together an application for the electronic commerce zone. That's a new designation that's in keeping with our, uh, our strength as a bigger city and MINET's capabilities in our community. Uh, they are now taking applications for that zone, so we will be presenting that very quickly, putting that together. Uh, at your request, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have extended offers, offers to all our commission candidates to meet with, uh, staff members, to give them an opportunity to understand what's important to specifically the independents as that, as that election proceeds. So, we're, we're busy trying to schedule that event. And did I mention that we have an application to talk about?
We don't. I just...
Keep y'all awake.
I don't know what to say. So, when I don't know what to say, I have somebody else who is talking, so we're gonna ask that, uh, Don Patton, the general manager of MINET, uh, if he would come forward and make his report. Now, Liz Bush, you'll be next. Good morning, welcome to council.
Good morning. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, school officials, and perhaps most important, students. My thanks, sincere thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today. Uh, again, for those of you who don't know me, uh, my name is Don Patton, and I am the general manager of MINET, which is Monmouth Independent X Networks. Uh, usually, once a month, I give a report to the Independent City Council on things like, uh, MINET's financial stability, our customer acquisition numbers, our competitive disadvantage, as Jerry was mentioning earlier, perhaps our competitive advantages. However, today, I want to talk about the vision of MINET. MINET was created through a shared vision to meet the needs of the citizens of Monmouth and Independence. MINET is in fact powered by visionaries. Today, though, those visionaries are you, the next generation. Before this meeting, uh, we contacted Mr. Herbert and asked members of his class to imagine the future of MINET. Your answers came with some common themes. You expect unlimited and instant communications. You expect unlimited pursuit of a career. You expect unlimited access to knowledge. You expect unlimited potential for the union experience. I agree. You expect unlimited choice in how to use your time. You reject what might set limits, things like no throttle, no data caps. We asked a question about your being provided literally unlimited speed, or speed that's capable of handling any equipment that you can buy. But of course, there are those who see, uh, a more immediate view of speed and things like, "I'd probably just get more games, play more games, like forever." When the internet is slow, I have to close the computer and turn it off or log out of a website, or actually go and do another activity while the computer starts working again. It wastes my precious time. If I had unlimited speed, I would use the internet to study religion, political figures, learn about running, and playing instruments. If I had unlimited speed, I'd download faster music, and not have to wait a whole minute for each song. There are many of us on this stage who remember it would take an hour. And this one, just to make teachers feel good, I'd do a lot more schoolwork done a lot faster than I do now. One person said, "My family has never had internet at home, so I couldn't, wouldn't know what it's like." And I'd like to make sure that everyone in here, every student in here, understands that MINET has put together a program to provide basic internet connection for less than $10 online. Your mistress Clark knows all about this, simply ask them if you'd like to participate. You know, I want to take, just, uh, I'm supposed to be brief, but I want to take just a minute to read one, uh, response that's a little longer and almost verbatim. It goes like this, "Well, for the questions that you asked, I could write a 10-page paper. And I'm not gonna do 10 pages, nor did this person, but when it comes to increased internet speed, I would be able to have so much more freedom in what I'm able to do online, and would definitely help me in that trying to pursue as a career. And learning how to animate and make videos for the internet and increased internet speed will save me so much time and frustration uploading and sharing my creations. Video files, as many people know, have very large file sizes. So, with increased upload and download speeds, I'd be able to share my videos more often in larger quantities, as well as download programs and things of, of that sort, that help me learn about animation and videos, as well as helping to be more productive. This is, it doesn't even mention my feelings on how it will change how I get my entertainment, because how we get our entertainment is rapidly changing. Uh, my house doesn't have cable, so I rely upon streaming videos on the internet for entertainment. This increased speed will also help with that." For the second question that we asked, and I'm, I'm happy to, to, to share this with you, I really have to thank MINET for providing internet service that doesn't have a data cap, that is generally fast and reliable. Honestly, I can't stress how many frustrations I've had in other towns and with other ISPs, internet service providers. I also live in another very large community in very near here as well as Monmouth, and my internet in this other city is most unreliable, is the most unreliable I've ever used. It's extremely stressful and annoying trying to use internet in this other city. Not only because of the data caps and the speed, but because I have problems with my ISP dropping my data. So, thank you, MINET, for being the amazing ISP that we are. Thank your council for creating it, and wanting me to do what I love to do online with ease. We also asked, the, the other question was, we asked you to envision the internet's future, and you said simply, "No limits." You said, "Give us a tool that will allow us to have unlimited freedom." That is visionary thinking. It clearly outlines MINET's future. We are committed to meeting your needs and delivering your needs. Thank you very much.
We have Mr. Klein, uh, making introductions here, so a little bit of, uh...
So, councilors, you, you're all familiar with...
is generally fast and reliable. Honestly, I can't stress how many frustrations I've had in other towns and with other ISPs, internet service providers. I also live in another very large community in very near here as well as Monmouth, and my internet in this other city is most unreliable, is the most unreliable I've ever used. It's extremely stressful and annoying trying to use internet in this other city, not only because of the data caps and speed, but because I have problems with my ISP dropping my data. So thank you, Minnet, for being the amazing ISP that we are, thank your council for creating it, and wanting me to do what I love to do online with these. We also asked, the other question was, we asked you to envision the internet future, and you said simply, "No limits." You said, "Give us a tool that will allow us to have unlimited freedom." That is visionary thinking and clearly outlines Minnet's future. We are committed to meeting your needs and delivering your needs. Thank you very much.
We have Mr. Klein, a big introduction here, so a little bit of judgment.
So councilors, you're all familiar with Ellie, Elizabeth's police girl, but I know the audience does not have that, some of you have, some of you haven't. So I just want to say, the city council last year, when they do their annual goals, one of their annual goals last year was to say, "We know we do a pretty good job of reaching our Latino community, our diverse community, but we want to do a better one." And he said, "You know, give me a challenge and staff a challenge and themselves a challenge, say, 'How can we step up our game?'" And so one of the things we did, we reached out and we found a very unique individual, a very talented individual, who is, was at the time, a college student at Willamette University, and has now joined us as an intern and is well on her way to a free ride at UCLA for her excellence in education and experience in life. Elizabeth has joined us as our liaison officer and an intern for us. She's working at near gratis, near free, but she's getting a great deal of experience for herself and doing a great deal of good works for the community. And so I just wanted to give you a chance to hear a report on a recent session that she attended in Portland, and you'll see it'll be a bit of a PowerPoint behind you and streaming while her conversation is going on. So just, with that, Elizabeth, please go.
I hope you're all awake. So, as the manager said, my name is Elizabeth Galistro. I was a student at Willamette recently, still taking a class there, and right now, I'm an intern for Independence, so I'm here full-time. And I was hired as a community liaison. Basically, what that means is that I worked into enhanced communication between the city and the community, specifically the Latino community. And as a part of that, I was presented with the opportunity to attend a conference in Portland called Governing for Racial Equity Conference. And so if you're not familiar with the term equity, there were a few definitions provided at the conference, one of which was the state in which all individuals, regardless of markers of difference, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, income, disability, and age, have equal privilege and opportunity to access the basic needs, services, skills, and assets required to succeed in life. This includes affordable access to healthy food, adequate and appropriate housing, quality jobs, safe neighborhoods, transportation and mobility options, education, civic engagement, health services, natural areas, and opportunities to participate in arts and cultural activities. So as has been mentioned in the meeting, there have been several projects that Independence is taking part of and that the community is taking part of to ensure that equity is available to all groups in Independence. And so I want to talk specifically about three of the workshops that I attended. There are some pictures here, again, the definition of equity. And so this is one of, the list of the first day of workshops. I attended Reading the Workforce for Racial Justice, a workforce development approach. And in that workshop, they provided three different approaches for increasing organizational capacity to create, promote, and apply pro-equity skills and tools in the workforce. The first one was in King County, and they had a equity and social justice training program for their staff. The second one was Multloma County's Health Department's Health Equity Learning and Development Training Curriculum. And that was similar, except it was more structured, so they had actual classes and a list of requirements that they had for their staff to invest in their employees' ability to eliminate systemic, avoidable, unjust differences in health status. So basically, they give them lessons on what is racism may not only interpersonally, but institutionally, what are the institutions doing to ensure that inequality is not a part of their system. And then the third one was the City of Portland's Organizational Approach to Equity, and what they did is they basically created an entire Subcommittee, it was an entire office called the City of Portland's Office of Equity and Human Rights. And their mission is to provide education and technical support to city staff and elected officials. They weren't created as a part of a specific issue, they were just created based on the need that they saw. And again, part of their mission is leading to recognition and removal of systemic barriers to fear and just distribution of resources, access, and opportunities, starting with issues of race and disability. It's just a year old, and so at the conference, they provided their first annual report. And one of the tools that I thought was pretty interesting was they created a budget equity assessment tool. And of course, their budget is a lot larger than ours, but they have an applied system to consider issues of equity and how their budget decisions and requests benefit and/or burden specifically communities of color. Overall, this workshop promoted various approaches that we as a citizen draw from to share resources among each other that can help us better navigate cross-cultural communication in our own community and in the workplace. To start, I did get a few resources that I'd like to share with you via email, but I'd like to urge the city council and even the youth to just share whatever resources you find about how to navigate cross-cultural spaces, because it's a really important skill in the workforce when you go off to college and anywhere really. We're heading toward a more diverse country, and so it's only relevant and timely. The second workshop is right here too, Equity in Practice: Launching Community Engagement Liaison Program. And I thought that was particularly important for me, because I am a community liaison after all. So they had an overview of Title VI of the 1964 U.S. Civil Rights Act, which requires public services and benefits to be accessible to all languages spoken in each community and government agencies. So language and sign language, for example, are things that breach this access mandate in important ways, but the Portland Office of Equity and Human Rights implemented a community liaison program that in essence is basically connecting to elders in each of the different ethnic communities represented in the city of Portland who serve as connectors and provide not only translation services, but also cultural competence guidance to city staff on the best ways to approach and interact with the different communities. So I thought this was a really innovative approach, because in the end, the different ethnic communities not only need translation, but they need to receive the information from people that they trust, and so creating these partnerships and collaborations was a really effective way of doing that. So these are some more of the pictures. And then the last workshop that I want to talk about was called Connecting Youth to Jobs, Connecting Youth to Life. And that was one of my personal favorites, because they really had innovative ideas. So in this session, we heard about Multloma County's Office of Diversity and Equity's governmental initiatives, and that was a great pipeline for youth to obtain jobs in government. The Human Rights Commissioner from San Francisco shared best practices for creating collaborative partnerships between local businesses and educational institutions to provide, again, opportunity for youth to take part in those different projects. And the reason why they did that was because young people in disadvantaged communities are the least likely to know about county careers or government careers, and they have little personal references, so they do not envision usually themselves performing those jobs. So the initiatives basically give the youth exposure to careers and supportive mentorship. So I do want to comment that despite the small size of our city at this conference, I was proud of, or in the time that I have been here, I have observed that much of the work that, for example, San Francisco is doing, we are doing at a smaller scale, but certainly making progress. The City of Independence is continuously looking for ways to support the youth in jump-starting their careers. We are constantly establishing partnerships with various organizations like Halo, I'm sure you know about, Habitat for Humanity, United Ways, Western Oregon University, and the School District, and many more, to provide youth with hands-on experience, volunteer opportunities, and internships. I would like to take this opportunity to encourage you to take part in these opportunities, that we are here not only because we want to have this event, but because we really want to express to you that we want to be a resource to you. And so to inquire at the library, at the city hall, for volunteer opportunities, and to understand that we are here for you. We want to share, I also want to share personally that I'm particularly proud and thankful to the Central High School Multicultural Club, who have taken part of their time of their days in the last few weeks to contribute to an event that we're planning called Festival Informativo, and that's catered toward Latino families, Spanish-speaking Latino families here in Independence. And basically, that event is going to provide the different families with resources and information about different services here in the community. And so the Central High School Multicultural Club has provided time of their day to do the outreach effort. So if you're interested in taking part of that as well, just let us know and we're happy to connect you.
Questions with speaker? Anything from council? Thank you so much for sharing, and it's really exciting. Our next presenter is Alex Travino, who's going to talk about some things coming up. And Alex, you're going to have three minutes today.
Of course.
And Sean Urbain will be following him. And I have a little bit of a handout here. Alex is the person in charge of the River's Edge Activities Summer Series. Okay, Alex, I'm going to hold you to this time. Go for it.
All right. Well, good morning, council. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alex Travino, and some of you might have seen me at Rookies, but I run the Conquest Series for the City of Independence. I graduated from Central High School, believe it or not, in 1992, so it's been a while. But we have a really exciting Conquest Series planned this year. How many of you guys have heard Lady Gaga? Or Matchbox Twenty? How about Gwen Stefani, No Doubt? We're not there yet. We're not there yet. We're getting there, I'm talented, but we're not there yet. This summer, I'd really like to see you guys out. We have a Music Fest happening in the amphitheater this year. It's called Music Fest 2014. We have American Idol star, Kimberly Caldwell, lit. We've got over 20 bands performing all day long on two different stages. A laser light showed it in the concert, and also a get-together with all the bands, autograph signings. It's going to be a great time, 2014, Saturday, June 14th, Music Fest, it's going to be in our amphitheater. We hope to see you guys all there. It's a family event, there's going to be over like eight or nine bouncy houses and a human flypaper wall. It's going to be a great time. So that's where we're going to kick off our music series. As far as our movie night and our own Conquest Series goes, we've got a great lineup. I've been working really hard with Swank Productions, which is where we get our movies from, and we've actually moved up on our priority list, so we're able to get a lot of the newer releases. And this year, kicking off our movie series is the movie Frozen, and we've tied it with Unplugged Ice Cream, so we'll be giving out free ice cream for that movie. And we've got movies such as Catching Enders Game and Catching Fire, the new release of Thor's, Despicable Two. So we've got a great lineup for everybody. And this year, to kick off our summer series, is we have the group U2 Hollywood, which is a tribute band, and they'll be rocking the amphitheater as well as an AC/DC tribute band. So we've got a lot of exciting things going on this summer. We hope to see you guys all there, and it's going to be a fun summer. So thank you very much, thanks for your time, council, thank you very much.
Rock out the Grand Canyon. Sean, was that as a lead-in? There you go.
So mayor, council, students, I'm happy to be here. My name is Sean Urbain, I'm Economic Development Director for the city. I want to talk real quick about an emotional effort, we're just getting wheels turning on. Unfortunately, I don't have any products to show you yet, but in a couple weeks, I will. You probably will remember our broadband community strategic planning effort. This was something that happened several months ago. It was a joint process with Independence and Monmouth to try to create a plan to enhance adoption and utilization of the broadband technology and capacity that we have here in the community. It wasn't specifically focused on Minnet, but a lot of that capacity is delivered by Minnet. Out of that, one of the key things we came away with is, we've got a real opportunity here to become a testbed community for technologies. You know, a lot, the average citizen is not needing gigabit upload-download speed right now, but the technology that's being developed right now that will require that kind of connectivity, and our community does have that connectivity at every home and business in town. So what we kind of said is, "Hey, you know, these companies are out there developing the technology, we should really make the offer to come here and test these technologies. They always want to be real-world test cases and samples to make sure the product works." So that's an effort we've been kind of getting the wheels turning on. In early May, I'm going to go into a site selector conference in Pendleton. For those who don't know, when a large industrial company expands, looks for a new location, is trying to relocate, they hire a consultant called a site selector to essentially identify the best place for them to go. Typically, these are large employers, 100-plus employees, and they're looking at workforce, they're looking at infrastructure, utilities, things like that. So what we've done is we've kind of taken this testbed idea and taken it to the next step to a test drive Independence campaign. And what we're doing is, kind of people, one, we're promoting the testing idea, but we're digging that to the next step and saying, "Look, you can bring your technology here and test it in Independence and Monmouth." In Independence, we actually have a conference room in our new civic center that we're looking at Minnet to rig it with 10 gigabit upload-download speed. And that is, I mean, that's about as fast as anybody's down in the country right now. And we're willing to offer that room to a company who wants to come to town and test their product, free for 90 days. So, you know, it really minimizes their costs of coming to town, it gets them in-town studying money, it's essentially testing out Independence, and if they like it long enough, you know, ideally, they might set up some kind of more permanent operation here. Now, what we're doing essentially, as a companion to that, we're developing some materials. I'm actually working with the graduate of one of our small business programs to, well, I do something a little bit different, because everybody at this conference is going to have the standard governmental brochure and information. So we're actually doing a comic book. We're doing a whole four-page comic book telling several stories of business success in Independence and why it makes sense to bring your business to Independence, and incorporating our brochure and our information within that comic format. So we're kind of doing that as a small physical one. We're going to have a jump drive that'll be handed out in the business card, that'll have additional digital one-page comics along with videos and more detailed information about the community. So just a little something to try to put a different spin on us, you know, we're a small community, we've got to find ways to stand out, I think it should be a good way to do it. And looking forward to showing you a final product.
Great. Great, thanks, Sean. Appreciate that.
I'll just go after Sean. I'm Robyn Puchetti, I'm the Community Services Director for the City of Independence, which means I work with the library, museum, and volunteer services, which is why I'm here speaking to you today. Some of you I know, I'd like to know more of you. I would also like to talk a little bit about the Ash Creek Arts Center, which is a new community organization, which is providing art instruction and celebration here in the community. If you're interested in offering classes starting now, you can check out their Facebook page at Ash Creek Arts Center, or there'll be a website going live later this week, which is ashcreekarts.org. So, check that out. I did bring today volunteer applications. If any of you are interested in getting some volunteer time, I did bring specific volunteer applications, I'll have them after this meeting. And also, you know, why do you want to volunteer? First of all, it is a great way to meet people with similar interests. Also, if you're job hunting or looking at colleges, it's great on a resume or on a college application. And finally, it strengthens your community. If you know a place that you're going to be staying for a while, it helps make it a more robust and interesting place to live. So think about volunteering. I have application. Come to me after the meeting.
Thank you, Robyn. Appreciate that.
Totally, Robyn. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. Greetings, students. My name is Bob Mason, and I am the Police Chief for the City of Independence. Today, I want to talk to you about two different volunteer opportunities that are available to you through the police department. The first opportunity I'd like to talk to you about is the cadet program, the police cadet program, that is available to people who are between 16 and 20 years old. This particular program is really an opportunity for people to determine whether or not public service is a place for them, is a career path. It lets them have some hands-on opportunities in public service and lets them make sure that a career in public service will continue to be allowed to them through some of the mentorship that they'll get. The first two slides that I've shown you are a pamphlet that we have developed that highlights the cadet program, and there are copies of that pamphlet. In 1999, Tino Van Waelos, a graduate from Central High School, was awarded Cadet of the Year. Tino had been hired as a cadet in 1987, and he also graduated from Central High School in 1987. So if you picture Tino sitting here where you are today, he decided he wanted to be a cadet, became a cadet, and two years later, he was Cadet of the Year for the program. During the time Tino was a cadet, we had a very good program going on, and I just grabbed this picture and it really stood out to me. I'm going to go through these six people really quick for you and tell you what's going on with them. Starting at the left is Chris Zorn. Chris Zorn is currently a firefighter medic in the Portland metropolitan area. Next to him is Tino. I'll talk about Tino in a minute, a little bit further. Jennifer, then was Jennifer Case, is currently a medic at Polkland Fire District. Her name is now Jennifer Wagner. Frank Edwards, next to her, is currently a dispatcher in California, working police dispatch. Ryan Risk, I'm sorry, Bob Wolf, Robbie Wolf at the time, is currently a successful career officer in Beaverton, and a canine handler in Beaverton as well. And the last person there, all the way to the right, is Ryan Risk, is currently a career officer in the city of Troutdale. So these cadets all came through our program and all found successful careers somewhere in the criminal justice, emergency services field. I'm going to highlight Tino for you. Tino Van Waelos was hired full-time with the agency in 2000. He was the Central High School School Resource Officer in 2002, and this photograph is when he was assigned as a detective and promoted in 2008. Since then, just this year, in 2014, this photograph is Tino Van Waelos' swearing-in ceremony where he was promoted to the rank of Sergeant within Independence Police. So about the Cadet Program a little bit. We don't hope that every person that comes to our program has a Tino Van Waelos that's going to end up a career officer going through the ranks at Independence. That would be great if some were. But we do believe that we can help influence career decisions and give you good guidance to keep you where a career in law enforcement is still a possibility for you as you continue to grow as young adults. Here at your school right now, we have two cadets that are Central High School students, and they are Zane West and Joey Bales. And so they're both in the program. If you have any questions about it, you can talk to them. Lastly, on the Cadet Program, we're hoping to really re-energize this program. I was a police cadet with the State Police. That's how I started. Tino was a police cadet with Independence, and he is now in charge of the Cadet Program just since he got promoted and sworn in for last council meeting. So that program is going to see some energy poured into it, and it will be a good place to be. The Assistant Coordinator for that is going to be Tim Reagan, who's also been a School Resource Officer here at Central, and he was also a police cadet at the Marion County Service Office. So just know that good things are going to happen, and if you have any interest, again, there are flyers on your way out, and there's a website there that has a link to the application and explains how you can apply to be a cadet. The second opportunity I wanted to talk about with you is Cleanup Day. Cleanup Day is May 10th this year, and it is an annual event sponsored by the Police Department and done in conjunction with the City of Monmouth. We are looking for volunteers for Cleanup Day, and again, as Robyn said, a good reason to volunteer is because it looks good on college applications. That's not the only reason, but it's got to be a good reason, because you've got to be thinking about that right now. It also looks good on scholarships to say that you were a participant in Cleanup Day. Cleanup Day is at Riverview Park, and there, again, are some informational brochures that we created that kind of try to pitch why it's a good idea to go to Cleanup Day. And you can sign up to be a volunteer through Sol's website, which is linked at the bottom here. You'll find that address. And you can sign up at our actual event, and they'll be expecting you on that day. And that was all I have.
Thank you for your attention. We have a break of work from our financial director.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good morning. They put me on the bottom of the list here because they don't want me to worry the desk all these time. I just have a couple minutes here. I have developed a financial report that I think we can't afford to leak. And it's brief. They never received one before, and so I just tried to keep them up to date. We're very into our budget time right now, and reminded that our budget committee meeting is April 14th. I think one note that I wanted to share with the Council was, we started a couple programs, new programs with our municipal court to get some of our old accounts receivables paid off. And one of those is where our court clerk has submitted those old fines to the Order Department of Revenue, and we've been really successful in collecting some of those old fines from tax returns. Kind of surprised people when they get their tax returns taken from the state, and we get them. Also, we started an amnesty program where we reduce the city fees that are paid for, that are charged to support fines. And with that amnesty program, we have been able to collect some really, really old fines. And so as a benefit to that, for those people that have those old fines, they have to have 100% of those fines paid off before they can get their driver's licenses reissued to them. So that's been a couple good programs for us. And so we're, the other thing is, we have successfully launched our new financial software. We converted it in February. We're up and running, and up and coming is being able to pay the city bills online. So some good things happening in our finance department.
Thank you, dear reporter. Appreciate that. We are a university. City Council tries to focus on doing policy kinds of things, but we need to be updated as we've heard a number of different reports on the operational issues, so we can see how the policy decisions we've made are actually taking place and help provide direction. Sometimes, we get to do a lot of sitting and listening. Other times, we get to take action. And we try to focus ourselves on the policy kinds of things of what's going on, because a lot of the things you've heard today were things that we put into our strategic plan and correct our staff to do along the way. We have an action item that we do need to take care of, and I think Mike Danko's going to handle that. I think we have an alley vacation, and Council members, you do have this in the package? Yes. I'm going to ask Mike to explain exactly what we're doing here for the audience.
Good morning, Mayor, and Council members, and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. This is a follow-up in old business for the council. But just briefly, when the mayor spoke of vacating an alley, he's talking about an undeveloped piece of ground, an undeveloped alley within the City of Independence, and he talks about vacating it, and it turns out we're giving up on property rights to that alley. The alley that we're talking about as you are now is the final piece of property. The action items you've taken with Mr. Bill Levy, if you recall, we received an easement along the river, or a bicycle pedestrian trail, from Mr. Levy. In return, he asked us to take care of some outstanding items for him. One of them is an undeveloped alley which is just west of the dog park, and right now is fenced, and there are various backyard things in that area. Staff is asking you to open a public hearing and take any comment that anyone may have regarding the application. The application was initiated by staff. It was not initiated by an applicant, which requires us to follow a slightly different process. So abbreviated summary of that, I just want to tell you that the correct notice requirements have been met for this process. So it's not a private application. It was a public application by staff, and the approval criteria has been met. So staff is essentially requesting you to pass the ordinance that you have in your pocket that would allow the vacation of the property, and with that, take questions if you have any.
Are there questions from the Council before I open the public hearing? No objections to open a public hearing on this particular matter. Is there anybody who has anything they need to say related to the matter in front of us? There is no rush to the microphone. So without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Council, do you have a last call for questions or any discussions? I know we've discussed this on several other occasions, and frankly, I'll speak to the matter. Is there anybody who has anything they need to say? Questions? Okay, this is an action item, and I appreciate it. Please.
I read the post ordinance, Council Bill 2014-06. If all of S.S.X. is obtained, the Council will act for the first time.
I have a motion, second discussion. Are you going to go to the discussion office and say aye?
Aye.
What we're doing, by the way, to tell you is that we are charter-driven, which is the city constitution. We have to read certain, read ordinance a certain number of times. If we have to have this approved or not, we're still likely to do this all in one city. And so that's what we're doing right now. It looks a little funny, but it's the way the law works. It's straight. And are you on the agree?
And ordinance may be in the alley involved in the Bronx County Independence, please stand in the background.
Go ahead.
I move to read the post ordinance, Council Bill 2014-06, for the second time. I will.
I have a motion, second discussion. Are there any questions?
Aye.
Then a full public hearing.
And ordinance may be in the alley involved in the Bronx County Independence, please stand in the background.
I move to adopt the prover of the post ordinance, Council Bill 2014, to the citizens. I have a motion and second. Any discussion, if you feel eager? All the members in the public say aye. And opposed, you very much.
Yes, and it will be given, ordinance number 1530.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. For an ordinance, for an ordinance, they paid you a piece of property about that line a while long. You know, sometimes we have mundane things to do that are just important things that you do have to do. Keep things, one of the reasons we had to do this is something that was done in 1967, didn't quite get done right, so we had to go back and fix it. Now, this is the part that I know that you folks have been waiting for. Each year, we come to the school, and we ask, this is what's called invited testimony. And we are looking forward to hearing your comments on what you see as your role for the future of Independence. What we want to hear from you folks is a little bit about what you see in the future for our community, and what you see as your role in making our community a wonderful place. And we're going to engage a little bit of, you're going to talk to us, and we may talk back to you a little bit, too. And so I think that'll be the, we've always found it interesting. And who's going to be the first person who would like to speak to that? And if you don't put your hand up, I'll call you. Because I know this was talked about in some classes. Mr. Holstead, do you have? Did you have any preparatory comments you wanted to make here?
Well, in my classes, we talked about several questions that may be raised to the Council.
We can do that, too. Somebody has something to say?
Before you guys go back to class. If anyone wants to have any input, any?
There you go.
Come on.
Okay, we have a couple people here.
Come on over and get in line. If you have any questions.
Hi, I'm Mo.
Come again?
Mo.
Okay. Full name?
Do I?
You have a real name?
Yeah, I do have a real name.
You did, please.
Okay. My name is Fiatizani Muana Kulani Tapasaw, and I was wondering by what you have to go through in order to be appointed to your different positions?
Would you have been like to? We're all elected. We're elected by the citizens of Independence. We each, we are on the ballot. City councilors serve four-year terms. I serve a two-year term. And so we are on the ballot. Anybody can be on the ballot, who is 18-years-old, citizen of the United States, and resident of the Independence, and can be fill out the paperwork, and so the citizens vote. That's why elections matter, to, and the people who get the most votes become the City Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, this is an election year. I am the Elections Officer, so if anybody is interested, all you have to, as a mayor sir, all you have to be is 18 and resident of Independence and a citizen of the U.S., and I can get you an election packet, and you, put you on the ballot for the election in the fall.
Okay, good starter question. We're rolling now. Please.
My name is Zoe Estes. My question's pertaining to the snow that we've had this year, and just about how we go about with dealing with the snow, and why snowplows and things like that aren't used very often. I'm just wondering why.
I'm the Labor City Manager. We talk about snow removal here and in other places.
Yeah, so snow removal is a significant challenge in a state like Oregon, where you don't, where we don't get a lot of snow. I came out of Colorado where I did most of my work, and we, every city had lots of snow equipment. It was, you had to invest in that equipment. It was very, very, very expensive, but you needed it all when it was long. We lived in the mountains, where we needed it three seasons of the year. Summer was about a week or two long. When you, as I started that, it's, as I said, it's very expensive equipment. The equipment we have is, we buy equipment that's geared towards our needs that are throughout the year, and to anticipate snow would mean not buying something else that we need to buy. You know, we have limited budgets we work with. So Mother Nature does a lot of good work for us when it comes to snow removal. We can expect that typically, snow will hit and will be gone within a day or two here. If, frankly, sometimes with snow removal, when people get out there to start plowing, it's actually more dangerous, the result is more dangerous for those that are not blind than having not just left them alone in the first place. The other thing that sometimes happens, our operators are sometimes very inexperienced with snow removal, and if we put them on the roads, trying to move snow once a year without practice, we may lose a few cars on the side of the road. So it's by heart, we've made a choice that we will, you know, we will, you know, let Mother Nature do its job. If it's severe, we may contact some contractors that are out there that have equipment, but it's too much, it's really very costly for us to get out for snow when it happens over there.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Hi, my name's Carly Youngquist, and regarding the Ash Creek Bike Trail along the Talmage, I was wondering if that was complete? And if it is, I was, may I suggest replacing the map, because it's a little old, and I was kind of confused by it, because there are some buildings there that are now there that weren't there in 2007.
So I'll take that, and I ask my, some of my staff to jump up to the mic as well. But that trail is not completed as yet. Frankly, it is the second, probably, of two priority trails that we are building. The very first priority trail that we have is our river trail. You may have seen workers done several years ago, putting a desken ridge across Ash Creek, done by Hoover Creek Park. We extended a concrete trail for, just for the access. At that time... At that time, it goes, they haven't been downed, but it's a new trail, they say, five K moving. We are still doing more work in that area. We are also doing the project, we're getting ready to do another project right now, which is update our parks master plan, which we're talking about, future trails in the community. So we're going to get, we'll have, we'll be inviting people like yourselves to come join us in that conversation, what you want our parks and our trails to look like. We'll be having public meetings and trying to get a lot of information as to what's important to everybody, yourselves in particular. So watch for that. As far as that trail has, it has not changed and it probably will not change for the near fu, near future. But we will talk about that more carefully when we talk about our parks master plan.
May I add something to that? The first trail, the Ash Creek Trail that you're talking about, there was a complete plan for it, but because we live in a democracy and, uh, any group can come forward and give their opinion and, uh, exert some, some pressure, large or small, on what they think should happen in the community. We had some pushback on the Ash Creek Trail from a group that actually, um, stopped the construction of it. They were vocal and they were very insistent. And as I said, because it's a democracy, we listen to everybody. And so there was a, a halt put on the trail. It may reconfigure itself in some way in the future, but what the original plan was did not come to fruition as we had expected.
I'm going to add one more thing as well, since we're talking about the trail. In our audience, as Willie, you listened to the presentation earlier about how we vacated some property, that property was everybody's property. We were, we did that because we were able to have an exchange with Mr. Lee and allowed us to build that river, that river trail, to the extent that we have, well, it's much his property, they didn't donate it to the city to make that happen. And so Willie, it's with the master gardeners. If you get an opportunity to go out somewhere to see someone who worked around Fir Park, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful effort and you can see a picture of that up on our Facebook as well, if you want to come like us on our Facebook as well. There's a lot going on with trails and parks right now in the city and we're going to gratitude to Mr. Lee for his contribution.
Morning.
Morning. I'm Andrew Borrow and I'm, I, I noticed that there's certain, some improvements for Monmouth and working like the theater for a travel. So I was asking if there's some, if people wanted to live in certain homes or visit, I was wondering if they could, if Monmouth or Independence could make a hotel or motel? If it's possible.
One of, I'll, I'll work on that. Their hotel, the question was, uh, there's a need for hotels in the community and how does that happen? Uh, those are private individuals who make investments. And the cost, Sean, what's the cost ish of a forty to sixty-room hotel ish?
About ten million, ten million level quality.
So, uh, a private developer would have to put down just about ten million dollars to build, to build a, a hotel. Now, there are some plans that, uh, are, um, being kicked around with some folks are looking at some places, they, in Independence to locate a hotel. We would, and having a, an event center that we do at City Hall, Civic Center, makes that very attractive, very, and there's a very long river front, they could be very attractive for a hotel. But it takes, does take a little while for somebody to be willing to put down between five and ten million dollars to build the facility, then you have to operate it. So it does take a while. There is, uh, there is a recognized need and, uh, we're working with people to try to make that happen. Sean, did you want to add anything else to that?
I can never remember.
Thank you. Did I answer your question?
I'll tell you.
Go ahead and ask your follow-up.
It would be beneficial for those needing jobs.
Yeah, we've talked about a couple things in my governor class, some strategies that you guys use and I think Sean talked about it in terms of attracting businesses to, because we always get the Taco Bell thing, you know? We need Taco Bell. And it's really, if these guys agree, the, the Taco Bell thing is still there. But we talked about, you know, what your guys' strategies are for attracting, you know, services like that in terms of hotels and, uh, Sean talked about... I'm going to ask Sean to step up to the microphone, one of the microphones. Sean Erbiden is our economic development director. Before he was with, uh, C S U P E Support. And he actually worked in South America, helping them, uh, using development kind of places. Uh, Sean, do you want to talk a little bit about what we do with economic development and what some of our strategies have been and what some of the considerations are?
Sure, and I can actually, I'll, I'll talk specifically to, to the hotel issues because that actually is one of my priorities, is trying to bring a hotel to town because we believe there is the need. So really, you know, we've got a few issues. The biggest issue that really we, we face is for a small community, for a rural community that's kind of a part, you know, the typical hotel, uh, you know, if you want to, if you want to build those hotels somewhere, you build it on an overpass on the interstate because there's lots of people nearby, the business traffic, major population centers, that kind of thing. So Independence on, you know, on first glance does not look like a, a great place to build a hotel. So, you know, essentially that makes us sit down and say, okay, well, what do we need to do to essentially demonstrate that there is this need here because we believe there is a need? So what we did was we actually contracted with a hotel consultant and said, look, you guys do feasibility studies for private sector, do a feasibility study for us and tell us what the demand is. And we're actually, um, we did that a couple of years ago, found reasonable demand, but not personally funded area of interest. We're doing another one this year based on a new concrete that's much more attractive for, for hotel development along the river. Uh, but the biggest thing that they want to see is really essentially identify demand. What are the businesses in the area that have, um, that have people, that, you know, have people coming to visit the businesses? What are the tourism draws? You know, the whiners in the area are of course a big selling point for us. Uh, you know, the university, you know, how many people are visiting the university? And, you know, the athletic teams that come there, they have to stay somewhere. So what we're doing is essentially cataloging all of those different demand generators to present to a hotel developer, you know, look, here's, you know, you've got five thousand room nights identified right here that have said, I would like to, you know, book these rooms in Independence if I have the chance. And here's roughly what I'd be willing to pay. So that's kind of where, you know, the, the angle we're taking now is really identifying that demand, quantifying it, and then making direct contact with hotel developers and saying, you know, here, come to Independence, come check out our, our spot, here's our, our, our demand that we've identified, what do you think about building a hotel here? And, you know, like Mary said, even if you demonstrate real solid demand, you know, that's five or ten million dollars. I mean, that's, you know, imagine putting that out of your own pocket. That's a, that's a risk. And so really, it's, it's just a matter of convincing these people that the risk is worth it.
And by comparison, Taco Bell is only a million.
Better answer? Good. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Leif Olson and I was wondering if you could tell us the environmentally friendly techniques that the city uses? Are there, are there practices that are more environmentally, environmentally friendly than, um, like traditional practices that Independence is utilizing?
Do you guess staff do solar and water and parks?
Yeah, yeah, it is actually a great question. So I think, uh, all I'm excited to come to the point is, one, uh, when we go through City Hall, uh, we, it's not need sufficiently rated or anything like that, but we probably could have gotten a lead certification for a little bit before. We, we don't do it before you incorporate sustainability in that building. So there's solar panels on the roof. Um, if you'll notice when you're going by, the downspouts from the roof, they go into filter boxes, they don't just go straight into the stormwater system. So they get, uh, essentially the stormwater coming down gets pre-filtered by the bio-soil and the rock in the planter box before going into our stormwater system. Same for tree wells and parking lots. The, the, the parking lots are designed to flow stormwater into the tree wells first for natural infiltration. And then if you have a major storm, then, then it essentially overflows into the, the stormwater system. Uh, relating to that with, you know, residential developments and other developments, we try to incorporate bio soils and, and natural infiltration techniques for stormwater. Um, you know, and, and of course, you know, the other side of it is, we're trying to encourage bicycle pedestrian activity with the, you know, development infrastructure and the trail systems that we're working on, um, you know, bike lanes on the roads, making sure sidewalks are safe and passable. Uh, we were, you know, putting, uh, putting bicycle parking downtown by, by commercial businesses. Uh, relating to these, we've had different steps we're trying to take to encourage a more, more sustainable community.
We, ah, you're not done yet. We have more.
That was a great question, thank you. It was a great question on earth and all this, but, uh, one of the things that we're exploring and will be showing, going to council with very shortly, is some kind of paperless system for doing their meetings. So currently, we spend a lot, we've got a lot of crews, spend a lot of energy, you know, preparing for council meetings with, with our prepared properties. Another area that we're, we're gaining tomorrow, we've been a little slow on the uptake, and we've been working on, is looking at alternative fuels for some of our vehicles, similar to what the sheriff's department does. We've, we've done some study work on that as well. But we are out there looking for ideas and certainly would love to have any combination from, from you folks, heard of ideas, how we can, we can always, always do better.
Yeah, I'm going to start talking about sewers. That's enough at the moment. Yes, Dan?
Hi, my name is Lupita Nunez. And so about a month ago, um, our student government class met up with, um, someone that wanted to put up a health clinic here for our school. And I was wondering if that's still happening or not? We have referred back to that and then, um, if it is, how will it impact, um, businesses here that don't do well?
Well, I know the county is, uh, undertaking that and I think there's somebody in the room who might be able to answer that. C S U's who, uh, was with the school district and, uh, see, I'm not shy, I'll just reach out and grab anybody that answers to, to, that has expertise. And, uh, Ceece, would you like to answer that one?
Sure, I'm C S U's. I'm the business manager here at the school district. And the student-based health center is in the planning stages. Basically, uh, we have, working with Polk County Health and, or Polk County Football Department consultant to consider the impacts on the community. We did ask students, we did ask parents, we asked staff and other community members to talk about the need for a student-based health center. The consultants have determined there is a need for those kind of services. Many of our students, if they have healthcare, they get that healthcare outside the community. So the missed school time, accessing doctors, dentists, there would be dental care there, and there would also be mental health services there. So sometimes getting those services is difficult and the, the cost of doing that, parents missing work, kids missing school, could easily be taken care of if we had that center here across the street from the next one. Um, they have talked to individual providers, so they have met with Dr. White, they have met with, uh, there was another doctor here in town recently, Dr. Kulis, who just chose to retire because of the additional demands of paperwork and the kinds of changes that are coming in healthcare. He, uh, Dr. Kulis has now worked with the consultants to indicate that he would be willing to actually work at our clinic to provide those services through the clinic. So we have interested providers, um, Dr. White says there is a need, we still have a need for folks who, you know, we don't have a lot of those services. And again, this would be dental, mental care, healthcare and the physical doctor care. So we're still working on that, but, uh, have a lot of support and a lot of potential interest. Is that, is your question? Thanks for the question.
Thank you, Ceece, for, uh, land. You know, I think this also goes with something that, uh, just because we're sitting up here doesn't mean we know everything. One of the things that, uh, we in local government do is we reach out to all sorts of people in all sorts of places with backgrounds that will help us. I know you have some other, uh, other questions, please.
Hey, I'm Maddie, Maddie Yang, and I have a question directed more towards the minor representatives. Um, you guys expressed you want to expand or you're competing against these larger industries. However, still in rural communities among the independents, we don't have mine offered to us. So I was wondering if you guys are going to have those services available anytime soon or is it projected in the future? Do you guys want to expand to more of the rural communities here in Monmouth Independence?
I'm going to ask Marilyn, since you have some, uh, I'm going to ask you and Jerry to maybe, uh, respond to that. Is that okay?
I, I would actually refer to ask our general manager who's here.
Okay, all right, done. I guess you get, uh, Jerry, we're watching. Well, that's...
I couldn't answer the question very well. Well, uh, Maddie, thank you for the question, I think. It's a very difficult question to answer. My net is still in its, uh, stages of becoming wholly self-supporting and stable as a company. Uh, it's not that we're slow. In fact, in our industry, uh, we're actually a little bit ahead of the game as far as being wholly stable. Once we have stabilized, uh, my net will take under consideration expansion and foot grip. And I think that the rural need is an application that we have some, that certainly have responsibility to look at as, as much as we have to look at, you know, say, a, a Salem as an example. However, uh, we have to look at the density of the population and the ability to pay for itself, the infrastructure that we put in. Fiber optic infrastructure though will last literally forever and has yet unlimited capability as the industry changes. It's an extremely expensive, extremely expensive network to put in place. So we have to look at, uh, the density of the area that we go into to make sure that we can make the network pay, pay back. Uh, but we're reaching the point, fortunately, where we can realistically forecast where my net will be stable, which is within the next few years where we can start to take our excess revenue and see where we're going. So it's not, uh, it's not our primary focus of this type, where we need to get what we're doing here self-supporting. Once we're at that point, then we'll certainly look at it. And, and we need to, because just like Monmouth and Independence not getting the attention of the day players, the rural community, the real rural, rural communities don't get any attention whatsoever. So to be honest, it's going to be on us today.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Lawson and I know this, um, topic has been brought up before recently, is that Monmouth and Independence are both smaller towns. I'm not saying they're small, but if, why, what's the problem with them not being together? I mean, if they're so small communities, why not bring together as a big community? What's the drawbacks to that or are there advantages to that or are there reasons why they're not together now? Because I know they did in the past that were reasons, but now they're more like and different, so I'm just wondering if there's a chance or possibility that can be happening?
Cities are the, I'm going to, I'll take a shot at this. Citizens and Independence and Monmouth both, uh, grew out of two different, uh, bases. In the eighteen thirties, eighteen forties, Independence, uh, was established and it's a port town. A port town on a river that has all the things a port town has. It was, uh, there was party town, it was a hard driving, kind of a really blue collar. The early Christian pioneers came back, came in eighteen, eighteen fifty-six, and they established what is now Western Oregon University. They purposely decided to build over there because they didn't want to be in a port town. They were a, um, a very religiously oriented group of folks and when they first established the university over there, it was a Christian college. And one of their first ordinances was, uh, there will be no alcohol. So that, so the two communities started in very different kinds of places. Fast forward a hundred and fifty years, um, we have two communities, um, we have a little bit different approach to the world. Our, uh, our emphasis and our, um, uh, our focus, our strategic approach are a little bit different. And that's not unusual. If you have brothers and sisters in your family, you have a little bit different approach. My wife and I have a little bit different approach, we work together, but, uh, we have a little bit different approach and we all do things in our, in our own way. There are discussions always, you know, whether we should combine Salem to Kaiser, St. Paul in Minneapolis, Minnesota, Eugene Springfield, Gresham in Portland, um, all those, uh, kinds of things have been suggested. A number of us think that, um, we don't want to stop our forward motion. A number of us think that we don't want to stop our forward motion. Just putting two communities together is really a difficult kind of thing, especially at the government level. We work really closely with our friends in Monmouth. And in fact, as a matter of fact, there's a valve that the Flint Water System got jammed up. We can open the valve to help out our neighbor, just like you would with a hose here next to our neighbor. But you're still different. We don't see, at least in my opinion at this point, we don't see that there would be a lot of saving because with, we're all, we're both pretty lean operations. It still takes as many people in public works to do the roads and sewers. Doesn't matter how you're divided up, there's not much saving. At the administrative level, you still need the same, because you have the same workforce. You may change the job titles, but there's not a lot of, there's not a significant saving. Police departments, they're protecting folks, they're doing their job. We're not exactly deep in all of those areas. So I don't think that there's a particular advantage to doing that. And I think that there's alternatives that we bring in our own. We're real proud to be in Independence. You're really proud to be in Monmouth or out in the county. That makes you a hopeful. And, but I'm not sure that there's a lot to be gained. And I think it would distract us from our efforts at economic development and really moving forward aggressively in the future. And that's how we have put ourselves together. Can I give you a reasonable answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for asking. Appreciate that. Now, I'm going to ask you a question. Come on back, ma'am. So tell me a little bit about, and I'm going to pose this to some of you. So what do you see in the future for our community?
Well, I see a lot of diversity around. And I know a lot of us are not together, obviously, with the same class. We're all from all over, all from a lot of different places, a lot of different ideas. But I think we all work together very well. And I can see a lot of us going all over, coming back, some of us staying and contributing out to our community. But I can see it growing. But the thing that I just see is that we share a fire department. And for two cities, why not bring together both police stations and contribute there? I mean, if they're centralized on two towns, why not make it one town? And that's, if we have this big population one and one the other, why not bring it together? Make a bigger population that help run it that way instead of having two ideas that can argue instead of having one that agrees all the time and just... I mean, I know in Monmouth and Independence, we're all together. But if we just have one, then we won't have to worry about the pack and board all the time. It just would make it more centralized for, I just think, be more fluid.
I was, thank you. We do collaborate here and all together. And besides having a joint fire system, we have a joint school system. Perhaps we should go seek care and get a packet and run for city council because it is your generation that will likely make this decision. Right now, it works for us the way it is, how it is. And we are very best at the upgrade, but that will be a decision for a couple of months.
Next person. It's also my understanding that you guys are working together with Monmouth and the county for the Sixteenth Street Sidewalk project, is that correct? So there is, there is some joint ventures you guys are pursuing to, you know, where those two communities meet, it's going to be good.
We all talk to each other and we get together in a month or two.
Yes, sir.
My name is Christian Smart, and I moved here from Idaho three months ago. And I'm actually a junior. I came here to learn about my community and what it's about and how it ran. So my question is, what will I see in the next couple of years in changes? And what kind of plans do you guys have for us in the near future?
I'm going to flip that question around for a second because you've heard a little bit about some of the plans that we have here. What would make you want to lift your twenty years' perspective?
Tourist attraction. Every great town has tourist attraction. And like, our town is, as Smart decides, you know, it's kind of a town hall. I'm a strong, I went to different towns around here, but a lot of these towns are exactly the same. And I was thinking, what could we make this town stand out? How can we make it build up and what can draw people here?
So what do you suggest?
I have no idea.
How many people go to the movie theater?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. A number of folks about six, eight years ago, eight years ago, when we were at this meeting, we asked people what they were interested in and what one of the things that was important. They said, we really liked it, you know, we love to go to the movies. It's a good thing to do. It's still the all-American day. I mean, I know people can watch YouTube, but people still, all ages, go to the movies and have pizza or something after the period. The owner of the movie, the person who built the movie theater, heard the interest that were expressed here. And that helped motivate Ellie Pissah to build an eight-flex movie theater in Independence. Most cities of this size don't have an eight-flex movie theater. What we did is that we worked with them to help make that happen, help make that a destination. And as you know, there are a number of people from West Salem, from Corvallis, and from Albany who can come over and go to the movies here. So we do have a little bit of a destination there. But one of the things that is important, and I just hope you'll pick this up, is we did listen because you folks have valid opinions. And that was one of the things when folks here said they really wanted to exit the movie theater, there was a developer and he wanted to do it, and he heard your comments, your press speeches, and now they have a movie theater. So it's not always about us telling you. Sometimes you get to tell us. So we have, so I hope that that helps you in some ways.
And John, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but...
I don't want to be over, I want to hear it.
We have a tourism and event commission in town. How do you feel about joining up? Talk to, talk to who we need to talk to if we feel important.
All right. How are we doing inside, Mr. Hoffman? We got a lot of... Okay, if you can probably, I know with some of the council members here, I think you can probably take this group of people and... Is that sound about right? That sounds about right.
My name is Kelly Nelson. And I have a question about bicycles. How, where I live, I live out in the country, apparently, makes it be bicycles that are active places. They're not really ideal because there's not really anywhere for them to ride. And usually there's corn, and there'll be white sauce on the ground to feed them. And it's not exploring through more ideal places than these.
Are there, so the question is, are there better places to get bicycles? Well, I know that they do race out of the county. And we don't have control out of the county. That's not somewhere where we, it's outside the city.
I'll just repeat what I said earlier about parks and recreation master plan. Part of that will be looking at the facilities that we have, looking at what we have for trail and bike intentions. See if, you know, to the extent that there are better route choices, we're going to try to give that, give that a serious look. To the extent we can make those routes that we have safer, that's always on our agenda. And so we're always happy to hear if you have specifics, please, you know, on the chair of this. So I have a couple here to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When people have events like that, do they have to apply to you if their route's going to go through the city? And is that a police department thing or is that a city council thing?
It's a combination. It depends. If it's on Highway Fifty-One, it's a state thing, if they do notice an emergency and they're coming through, if they need traffic control, they don't have to apply for a specific commitment that they have from us to be able to handle that. If it's just through our secondary streets, then those directions will be there.
And is there a possibility of reroute that? Do you have the authority to say this is not a good route?
If it looks dangerous, that's where we would come up with it to ultimately.
So John, I was going to add one thing to that. Right now, we have several folks that are running for county commissioner positions. And that would be an excellent question to pose to each of those candidates to get a feel for how they think about bicycles on county levels.
Yes, sir.
So my name is William Coy. And I was wondering about like the parks, like specifically, like any kind of tour equity park. Are there any ideas that you guys have, like future ideas specifically for the park? Like I know that we have the amphitheater that we use every summer. We use it, you know, for multiple different attractions and occasions. Is there anything bigger or big that you're planning on adding to it, like adding to the park in general?
You want to talk about parks again, Sean? See, what we do, sometimes people work more closely with it, how sharp the rate is and sharper point we're at.
So, you know, it's really going back to the Parks Recreation Asher Plan we're going to do this, this coming summer. Because we obviously have a good, about a mile-long stretch of riverfront all the way from the river. But we own almost the entirety of it. It's getting filled up with various uses. We want to make sure that those uses kind of continue to be complementary and not detracting from one another. So the short answer is, I don't think we have really, as a staff in the city, we have specific, you know, we need to put this and that building in there. We've got a few general ideas we're talking to some people, we should move this golf ball there, but that's probably not going to happen. But I'm really looking forward to that being something that comes out of the whole input process here in the spring and summer, home master plan. Because a big part of that plan is really taking a hard work out of that whole riverfront and saying, you know, what else do people want to be able to do down near by the river? Or within the community that there's fish down near by the river, what else can we use to make it even more active and viable in place? And so I think that's where a lot of these, these additional possibilities are going to come out of for that. And we do hope some, some right of way going to the south, so there's a possibility in the future that we need to expand. At least the sort of trail portion of the park to the south as well. But in terms of specifics, if we're able to have too much more, then we're absolutely going to be in the clear right now.
Let me add to this a little bit as well. I think, you know, in terms of specific projects that we, that we are working on in the future, and I'm sure most of you are aware that for years, we've been working on a major ball field complex on the very north end of the project, that's some fifty acres. It's a very large site. We have put a moat ramp in that location. It's going to have complimentary sports fields that'll be made available to the public. We have, since we also have, and Sean's been working hard on this, a bike voter campground that works more, you know, just next to Asher, you can maneuver your car. That park by and large, I think we're all aware, that park is very unique. It actually stripped, that strip of greenway along the river is very unique for our community. There are very few cities that have that much access to the river and that great opportunity to do some larger vision that we have. So that's what we're working hard on, trying to understand what that future could look like for all the green that's low over the mile of river access. We want to create a vision around, create a future of the parks and recreation master plan for the summer. So again, we'd like you to include participating in this, in that process.
And an additional answer to what Lee asked earlier. We built the amphitheater to be underwater seasonally. So we did take that into account when building the amphitheater. So when you see somebody down canoeing in the amphitheater, we're not destroying anything. It's going to be just fine to come next spring, and the ball fields will be filled with the same contingencies.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michelle Antonio. I'm a former junior. I was a junior and now I'm a senior. Like last summer I was a junior and now I'm a senior. But what I want to talk about is, well, I know we talked about the different ethnic groups and how we talked about racial awareness. I, from what I understand, there is a group of Chinese students that will be coming here in Central and maybe also offering a language in Chinese, I believe. I think that we should take this opportunity to expose more of this diversity that will come to, you know, be more acquainted. So I was wondering if it would be possible, I'm not sure if this has to come from private organizations or groups, where, for, I know there's this organization that sends Central students to foreign countries, but I was wondering if there's something vice versa, where we can bring, like, because my old school, we had a lot of French exchange students and Southern Italian students, as well as some sort of Russian conference students coming over. I'm not sure if that's a plausible thing or that's completely incorrect.
There are a number of organizations, AFS, World Re, High Education First, who bring students to the United States. We send students from the states over to other countries. I know, Council Hoffman, you, well, you've had a number of students that have lived in your house.
We have a number of students that, to the part of Central High, they're here for a year. They experience everything that all these kids experience during that year. They get home with them, and we get a lot out of what they drink to us in terms of their education, awareness, maybe.
Yeah, I was just thinking to make this, as we talked about tourism, I think that a lot of it would be benefiting from diversity. Because from where I live, just junior, which is more of a, it was a port city and a military base, and we have a lot of diversity and a lot more industrious. So I was just saying, perhaps if we did more of that diversity, we could do more tourism and industrious, I guess.
Well, I really appreciate your comments because I think as, a lot of the work we do locally, my job, from here in the city, is really the economic development kinds of things. And we really are in a global marketplace where people move, where business is international, people travel internationally. And I think it's really important that folks meet people from other countries. There are, people have different ways of doing things, different perspectives. And I think it's really important that we, we have an understanding because it's changed a lot just in my lifetime. You know, when I was, as young as you folks, I never, I grew up in Salem. I never thought I'd travel anywhere. I didn't, I didn't take a language because I speak original. I never thought that I'd travel internationally as much as I have over, over a number of years and be doing so much international work in business that has an international connection. So I think it's a good perspective and I thank you for bringing that in front of us today.
Hello, my name is Shane Cooper. And the question I have to propose is, there's this, I've finished building next to a library that I think was supposed to be a mixture motel and mall. I was wondering what was going to happen with that, with the building, if everyone would be completed or is that a problem or spot?
I'm going to have our city manager talk about Independence Station. And where, so we're talking about, right, that's the building right next to Quiber.
Yeah, so in the, let me talk a little more history of Independence Station, or that building you're talking about, the half-built structure. This, the developer started that building in early two thousands and was not able to complete it for several reasons, mostly financial reasons. There were a lot of changes in the building, originally had money. So since that time, he also owns the city. And so for a long period of time, that building sat idle. There were a number of starts and stops, changes. By the time two thousand, by the time two thousand and ten came around, the city had, he had stopped paying the city for what he owed us. And so we made the decision to pursue that debt for two reasons. One, we want to get paid, but two more important, we've got to build that building back through the force. We could help restart that from it. We could turn it into a viable builder that had more, you know, more money available to build that bigger building and turn it into whatever it needs to be. So that's when we started that process in two thousand and ten. As I announced earlier today, we are only now getting to close of that process. which is finding, putting it for sale by the counter to clients. That's it. If nobody else expects more and says they want the building, they won't pay enough to get it, we will get the building back. So that's, that'll be made by the third. After that, then we will start the process that I just talked about, which is to find somebody that has the ability to finish the construction, to create that vision, to start that. It's a very long process for people, you know, and we get, there is no question to ask more often of us than what is going on with the station. The answers are never satisfied. It's not been in our control, we're finding it. Open that up.
For six hundred thousand dollars, you too can own a building. Yes, sir.
So I got a question about, there was supposedly going to be a Walgreens out in the plaza, not sure where that actually is.
I can help a little bit. While that's in Monmouth, I, I do speak regularly with Mayor Obers in Monmouth. And he let me know that Walgreens still owns the property there on Highway ninety-nine and fifty-one across the Burger, Burgerville. They still own it. They have told him they're still waiting. And there's a big sorting out going on in the pharmacy industry. And Mayor Obers, I know some of the members of their council are as impatient as I think you are, I can assume that you are, because that, that property has sat vacant for all the time I've lived in this community. And it's still sitting there. And so I know they're waiting to have it moved forward and, that's all right now.
Another question that I picked up a little while coming over here was a possibility of ice rinks.
An ice rink? How many ice skaters are there? There's enough of you, maybe somebody could start that up. I would, I would, Jerry, if you wanna talk a bit, from your background, of what it takes to be a, maybe more of, if Jerry, if you can, for us to talk a little bit about what it takes to be, what are the considerations when you're a business owner on where to place something and what it costs to do that? I know both of you have been active involved. Do you want to jump in on that? Please.
Nope. This is the first year where the teacher has asked the question about, not the student. We've had that question for eleven years in a row. We understand the need. All we have to do is find somebody that wants them to get us between a billion and two million dollars to build it. Because Taco Bell doesn't build a real building anymore. They contract for that to be done and they have to have, somebody has to come up with the money to do it, somebody has to operate it. So what happens is, they may censor demand, but if nobody comes up with the money to build it, it's not gonna be built here. That's why, you know, other small towns around this get, we gotta burp first, you know, but, and it's, it's successful because it's right on the freeway and it gets playing demand because there aren't many of them, right? It's hard to find another one, right? So as a business owner, one of the things you look at is, can I pay my bills? And once I build this, can I actually make it at least break even? You never wanna settle for just break even, you wanna settle for, unless you're a government, then break even's a pretty good thing. But as far as a small business, you have a lot of concerns, you have to, you have, just the idea of hiring people. It's easy to hire the first person, but the rules and regulations that it takes to hire multiple people to run something like that, and the turnover and the cost of training and everything else that rolls into that, all adds up. And that's why when people have a billion or two million dollars, they might hold on to it. They're not really interested in throwing it into the cockpit or murder or whatever. But I'll let Ford talk a little bit more about small businesses. That's really not small.
No, I wouldn't be small. When, when I, when I go out there and meet with people, a lot of times I hear them express their ideas and when I question them, why, why are you choosing this idea to build a business around it? Sometimes the answer is because it, it doesn't already exist and so there must be a need. And oftentimes, there's a reason it doesn't exist because there's, there's not a customer. So the first, the first question that I think anybody who's trying to build an idea like this has to look at is, is there a need, is there a demand, do I have a customer for, for this type of business? And if you look up and down the belt, you'll see that there really aren't that many skating rinks, ice skating rinks, there's one in Portland, but it's associated with the mall, which is already an attraction there that brings people into the mall. And quite likely, to have that type of business has been required in a much larger population than, than what we have. While there may be some people, I mean, there were a lot of hands that, you know, probably told there, the question always remains, will you go there every week? Because that, that's the type of support that that business is gonna pay. And as Gary was pointing out, some of these kinds of businesses is very expensive, so people are willing to risk their money and their time building something that, that people in the community will support.
So I'd add, the government doesn't create businesses. But we can, but what we do do is try to create an environment that is attractive, that we can encourage others to invest their funds, their time, their effort to wanna do business here. But we don't, we're not the ones who go out and say, we wanna open up, talk to them. Does that help?
Those were questions from students that get the phone. Your mind, your question or suggestion, sorry, but in the future, you ask us what we would want to see in town. And for me personally, being really towards, I think that a rec center, an annual rec center for, that both Monmouth and Independence could use would be very beneficial because we live in Oregon, it rains a lot.
Agreed. And I, I do wanna let you know that I did serve on a group, the YMCA has worked really hard to try to build, put something like that together. We actually put something up for ballot in two thousand and eight for a greater recreation district by, you know, everything from school to jail to school. But if you remember in two thousand and eight, between the time we were giving signatures to put it up the ballot and the time we built it out of, the economy was really in the flow. And I was out at the airport and some people said they really liked the project, but I just lost a hundred thousand dollars to talk myself into it. And so it was not just that the voters were willing to pay for it and it was probably not to do that. And so those, that's one of the challenges is that if you have private money, you can do things, but if you're going to ask the public, you know, you have to give everybody at least fifty-one percent, fifty percent plus one, to say yes to, to do that. Those are two difficult and challenging questions. I have one more person, we have one more question, and then we'll wrap this up for today and let you folks get on with your, your gift.
I'm saying less, disagree with you. So on your way, Independence, there's a sign that says playful city USA, and I was wondering what exactly that means and how is that structured?
Sean, you're the person that helps get us a playful city. So explain to the world what a playful city is.
So there's a national organization called Kaboom and they agree with the city designation. It's, it's kind of, kind of a knowledge of playful city USA designation. The idea is they're, they're recognizing communities that essentially go above and beyond in their efforts to promote play and active recreation. So focusing primarily on, on kids and building playgrounds and getting kids out, running around, moving around, and that is easy that way. But actually, they're, they also are interested in, in, you know, high school, getting adults in terms of, like I said, active recreation, active living communities that would support, give you lots about moving around, moving each other. So that's really kind of what it is. We applied, I think, two years ago, you know, on basis of several projects that were going on, Pioneer Park, developed into a community-like project. They also like to support projects like that Pioneer Park situation where the neighbors actually got together and helped raise money for the playground and actually helped build the playground themselves. So that's really, that's kind of, that's essentially the meaning of the playful city USA and we're actually in Oregon.
Thank you, Sean, I really appreciate that. I wanna thank the students for sharing, you know, you don't like that, for sharing some of their opinions and questions. Before we close out, any announcements or council comments that we need to make at this point? Anybody have anything to say? Okay, council members, I remind you that we are gathering again at noon for a special work session today, so I'll see you there. I wanna take a moment on behalf of the council, I really wanna thank the students for taking the time today to learn a little bit more about your community. Because as you can tell, that in a few years, some of you will be up here. Because the most wonderful thing about living in a community like Independence, like Monmouth, is that you don't have to be gray-haired, it's okay if you are, but you don't have to be. You don't have to be loaded with mega millions like you have to in some other places. You have a chance to be involved in your community, whether it's being on the city council, the school board, being on arts committee. I encourage you to be involved somewhere as you go forward because you do really shape the future. How many of you are voters? A bunch of you are, and I'm really proud of that. Because you're gonna start shaping the future when you step and fill out your ballots. And, and remember in two years, those who we saw, of course, will be voting for president also. Scary guy. But please, be involved in your community, it does make a difference. It's a pleasure to be here again. Thank you for helping make this a meeting, it helps me. And if I can have a motion to adjourn, all three, if I say aye. That was motion carried, thank you. We're done.